The Pledge of Allegiance. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to start off today's meeting. We had a budget work session at 5:00 PM where we discussed the 2023 results, the unaudited results. And I get the pleasure of starting this meeting off with a presentation for the retirement of Janet Casey. Janet, do you want to come up? First, I want to thank Janet for all of the work that she's done over the past 15 years with the township and with our police department. It's a remarkable feat to have spent so much time helping her community and all the people that she serves with. I'd like to present this plaque, presented the second day of April 2024 by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors to Janet Casey in recognition of her 15 years of employment with the police department and dedicated service to Doylestown Township.
Just a couple of quick words about Janet. Janet began her employment here in January of 2009. However, my knowledge of her and her family preceded that by many years. In the fall of 2008, a clerk opening came about, and I can recall speaking to Chief White at the time about filling a physician. I mentioned Janet's name to Steve, and with his blessing, I reached out to her. Do you remember that?
I do.
I believe Janet was a little shocked, but at the same time, very interested, however, very apprehensive, to say the least. I knew that Janet was no stranger to hard work, as she had always held down multiple jobs and managed to struggle work and family. After several conversations, she agreed to throw her name into the hat, and from that moment, I knew exactly that we had scored and she was the right fit for the job. She was eventually hired in January 2009, and over the next 15 years, her apprehension turned to confidence, and she quickly became a valued member of our small family here in the police department. Janet came to work over the past 15 years with a positive attitude, day in and day out, and displayed the best personality traits an employer could ask for, for anyone who had a role as a customer service agent every day of the week. To the many visitors she encountered, Janet, you're sorely going to be missed, and I appreciate everything you've done for us for 15 years.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you so very much.
So I'm going to ask my fellow board members. I'm looking at the audience right now, and I recognize that there are people who have a specific interest on the agenda. Would you be comfortable with me moving new business to after minutes approval?
I'm fine.
Yes, fine. Okay, wonderful. So, public comment. I ask if you have any agenda, any comment on particularly the plans that we're going to be looking at today. You can hold comment until after the presentation, and then there might be more of a back-and-forth question, comment section, so that we can at least get some of those questions out of the way during presentation. But is there, you're welcome to come and speak anyway. Is there any public comment on agenda items? All right, wonderful. So I'm going to make my announcements for the month. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 7:00 PM. The Doylestown Township Municipal Building will be closed Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, for the primary election. Arbor Day Community Tree Planning will be Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. We'll be planting 50 native trees along the Neiman Trail. Volunteers are needed. You can sign up today on the Doylestown Township website. Join in the celebration of our 10th anniversary of the Native Plant Garden. It's gorgeous. It's at the, it's by the Retention Basin in Central Park by attending a garden party hosted by the Environmental Advisory Council. The event will be held on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM. Enjoy hands-on educational opportunities, environmental crafts, live music, and botanical refreshments, all while surrounded by the garden. We hope to see you there. Parking will be available on Bittersweet Drive and the cul-de-sac on Hudson Drive in Doylestown Lane. National Night Out, we had a presentation regarding National Night Out last meeting. That will be August 6th, 2024, between 4:00 and 8:00 PM at Central Park. It's an amazing community event. You can meet our officers, you can look at different vehicles that they have, and it's really, it's really quite a thing. Keep up to date on Doylestown news and events if you sign up to E-News. That's, if you go on DoylestownPA.org, E-News comes out once a week on Friday. It has things like office closures, that this one was installation of some stop signs that we had on Sandy Ridge and Broad Street, volunteer opportunities, updates on Central Park and the renovations that are going on there, as well as concert series information. All right, next on the agenda is minutes approval. Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
I'm moved for the approval of the minutes from the March 19th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
I'll second.
I'd like to make two adjustments to the minutes. The first one would be, at our last meeting on 3/19, an ordinance was presented to the Board of Directors regarding single-use plastic bags. When we referenced, when it was presented to us, it said it would be matching the Doylestown Borough's ordinance, but they don't charge the 15 cents. And according to this, we are charging it. I also said, so I just want to reflect that ordinance doesn't mimic the borough, that we will be charging. And then I also had said my concerns about it being a hardship was for potential impact specifically for our seniors, which are 24.6% of our township, as well as any potential disabled. Those were the comments that I had wanted to be sure included.
Okay, just, just to make sure you recognize that our minutes are not verbatim. They're not summaries.
I understand that. I understand they're supposed to be not a summary, but those specific points are specific to people that will be impacted by it. The second concern, and what I'd like also to be included and corrected in the minutes, is regarding the southeastern trail connector. I had said I would, when I talked about the trail, my concerns about the cost of the township. It was only 5% of the, of the users are bikers, and I also stated more than once that it's going to put at least a half a million dollars, $500,000, onto our budget, and that was my concern. So it was not listed. So I, I understand it's a summary.
Summary, right.
But at the same time, I think I said the $500,000 at least three times, so I'd appreciate it being included. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I'm okay with the, the second two pieces. The first piece about the borough not charging 15 cents, that's not a correction to the minutes because it wasn't discussed as part of the min, as of the meeting. I understand that's a correction to the point of order, but it's not what we discussed, so I don't think that should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay, I just know, when it was presented to us, my understanding, as I said, was that it was mimicking the ordinance that the borough was doing with the single bag.
Sure, and I understand that point of it. I'm just saying, but I don't think we ever made.
They don't charge, and we're looking, we're looking, the township's looking to charge the 15 cents.
Yeah, and like I said, I understand that. I just don't, we never discussed that as part of our meeting.
Right, the minutes reflect the actual discussion had, not necessarily in, in the specific content of each thing. So, you know what I'm saying?
No, I'll go back and review it, but I thought there was comment. It's, it's fine. I just, one of my two points in about.
Yeah, the last two, I'm fine making the corrections.
Thank you, Dan. No problem.
Do you have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
I think Judy seconded already. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we're going to move this up, the new business up, so. Get my notes ready. So we have Bucks County Historical Society Hart Property. Would representatives like to come up and speak on the matter?
Okay, thank you very much. Stephanie, thank you for inviting us to the township meeting this evening. This purpose of this is to do, the presentation is just to inform the Township Board of Supervisors as an introductory conversation to the position of the Bucks County Historical Society regarding the Hart property. My name is Kyle McCoy. I am the president and CEO of the Bucks County Historical Society, and I am here with Rich Zavetta. I'm going to start off the presentation by talking about the Hart property, identifying it, talking about the history, and then talking about the BCHS conversations that have been going on for about six years now. So the Hart property, as some of you know where it is, it is actually the plot of TMP number 09-009-066-001, and it is approximately 24.22 acres. It is privately owned by the Bucks County Historical Society and is currently used for off-site storage and resident curator housing. It is not open to the public, it is just privately owned by BCHS. And the history of this came from the George Hart family. The first portion of the land was gifted to us in 1994 with a request for George Hart to be lifetime tenancy, which then he moved back into the house, and that's where he lived, until about 2003, when he chose to move to Jim Thorpe and then gifted the rest of the property to us. And then he passed away around 2009, and in the deed, it came back to, the whole thing came to us. So like I said, we have been having conversations about highest and best use of lands that we own since 2018. And that's really when it began, when we did an organizational-wide survey of all of our assets, all of our resources, to determine what long-term priorities would be. Like I said, we always want to take a look at the highest and best use and how it best overall serves the health of the organization as a whole. Of course, 2020 then came, and we paused everything, just trying to survive COVID with all of the restrictions that were going on at the time. And then we picked up the conversation again in 2021, when we were planning our strategic plan. And what happened then was we really took a look at all the properties that we own, and we separated them into primary and secondary. And I think we can all agree that the primary properties, of course, are the historic and iconic Font Hill Castle and the Mercer Museum, both of which were left in trust to the Bucks County Historical Society by Henry Mercer himself for the community access. And we have always had free public access to the grounds. Font Hill Castle is approximately 69 acres. Mercer Museum in the borough is approximately seven acres, and it's always been full public access, but I need to remind everybody that it's still private land. So we're still footing the bill and very happy to do so. That is what our primary concern is. That's what our primary mission is. The Hart and the Roof Properties became our secondary. We acquired them through various ways at various different times, and again, closed to the public. So the BCHS Board of Trustees, as well as the leadership staff, had many, many conversations about active and passive resources also. It's not just primary and secondary, it's active and passive resources. And then as the question started turning to what is our role as property management for secondary resources that could best be used as an asset better to maintain the Mercer Museum and Font Hill Castle? So then the strategic, the strategic plan also outlined different goals that we had, different, provide safe and appropriate environmental conditions for the preservation, not only of the buildings, but for the collections that we have, about 50,000 collections. So now, fast forward to now, it's 2024, and after six years of conversations, we have come to understand the need to divest ourselves of the Hart property from the perspective of using our own resources than to assist the curation, the preservation of Font Hill Castle and the Mercer Museum. That is our primary mission. That is what we want to do with the community and for the community. We also want to be a good neighbor. We also want to be a good resident of the township and a good steward of the Mercer Museum and Font Hill Castle. So, Zavetta Custom Homes is not only a well-respected, well-trusted group in this area, but they also share our historical preservation as well as our community service guide. And so what we want to do is we have consulted with him in the ways that might be the best use of this land. He's going to go into the zoning between I-2 and R-4 and all of that. That is not my world, but I just want you to know that we have decided to do this, and I trust Rich, and I want to make sure that he gets heard on what some of the possibilities are of what we can do with this property. So Rich, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm here tonight with my assistant Kayla, Sharon Dodds from Gilmore and Associates, our chosen civil engineer. That will be the team that we hope to bring this vision to life through. I just want to be incredibly clear. We are not acting as a typical developer, where I was chasing this property down, twisting the arm of the Historic Society to do something, and moreover, left completely aside any type of languages like max return on investments, maximum grid yields, and how do we keep the needle at the maximum density that's permitted by zoning law? That's not who we are. That's not who we ever intend to be, and I'm hopeful that you'll see the merits of what I'm going to propose this evening. Our career, our business, I've been doing this since 1978. We are located in Buckingham Township, right on the edge of Doylestown. We employ 75 staff members of payroll employees and tradespeople, so we are a true building company. I pride myself on historically having worked on larger tracts with the mantra of preservation. It is not unusual for us to have a 100-acre, a 200-acre parcel and put in five, 10, 15 houses with preservation on the balance. That is what I believe in. I grew up in Silbury Township. I've always respected the Bucks County Historic Society's work and their tireless endeavor on preserving the past. With that being said, I'm looking in through an open window on this in making recommendations. That's our extent. So with that being said, I take their endorsement of us and reaching out to us, and I will say that we are doing this on an uncompensated basis, trying to be an advisor, to try to come up with a true win-win program. So we've put extensive amounts of time in what does one do with an I-2 zoning as to return their funds to move forward with their valued projects that Kyle has just described. The trick to this is, if we are involved, I need to be hitting their marching orders for revenue, but also very much respecting the existing residents. I have numerous friends and associates that live in this surrounding community, and just simply on our mantra to always try to do what's right and be sensible and practical is a guiding force for us moving through this. So when you consider the I-2 zoning, our primary of our six outlines is respecting the significant historic value of the property and the Hart residents that come along with it. Shockingly, this has been in ownership of some form of the Harts for 156 years. That speaks volumes to me of the importance of the, of the property, the importance of the buildings, and in the perfect world, something that will keep these buildings intact. Anyone who's enjoyed ownership of vintage buildings from the 1700s is well aware of the high maintenance and in today's world, the unbelievable cost to keep things in good order. So the overall proposal that we're coming up with is, one, respect the neighbors around the perimeters, do something that does not detract from the value of their home, do something that does not interfere with limiting their enjoyment of their backyards, meet the criteria of the Bucks County Historic Society, do something that preserves these iconic buildings, and more, something that I can put our name on it and endorse it as a great project. That's a lot. That's a lot to fit in. And in looking at the I-2, we'll come to that in just a moment of what one can do in I-2, so I won't dwell on that immediately, but it's absolutely our goal to hit all those criterias that we've just met with while still providing the Historic Society funds to move forward with their well-valued projects that the whole community benefits from, and more than just the community. In today's world of runaway technologies and forgetting the past, I think their statement and what they provide is not just for the county, not just for the state, but for a very broad base of people to look back so that we're looking forward in a positive and accurate direction where we're headed. With that being said, it's of my opinion that I can do the best job for all involved if the township would consider providing us with a R-4, B-5 special condition of a zoning change. Ironically, this was a residential zone property when it was gifted to the society. In moving forward and building a storage facility for their artifacts on the property, which is substantive building, there was a need of zoning change for that purpose. Consequently, the I-2 zoning was placed at their request, taking it out of residential. Basically, if you could go to that next slide, the, the image in the charcoal is the property. You'll see that it's I-2. Everything around it is R-4 or a commercial derivative. The immediate neighbors are falling under the R-4. R-4 allows for super densities. Many of your lots are about 100 feet wide, 110, 120 on the tops. That's a significant level of density. Let me be incredibly clear. I am not asking for that, I'm not representing that, I don't want to be involved with that. That is not us, and that is not, in my opinion, in your best interest. Hence, after agonizing through the particulars of what do we do to make sense of this for all, this zoning would allow us to utilize a zoning that would permit what I did on Lower State Road called Town's Edge. That's right across from the Y. That is a historic reproduction agricultural building that houses 12 residential units on the inside, and I'm going to spend a little bit of time tonight as to give you a quick tour of what our vision is. Specifically, that Town's Edge structure would be emulating historic ag-related buildings and showing purposeful changes and purposeful material differentials that would have been in place if it had started in the 1800s, where already in the 1800s and 1900s, pressure for agricultural needs were changing in the area. To do the best job on this, it starts with looking at the I-2 zoning. Things that we can do on the I-2 agriculture.
Rich, I'm sorry, you need to speak into the microphone.
Can't quite see that far. Okay. Items, things that we can do in a I-2 zoning. Agriculture, horticulture, nursery or farm, raising of livestock, horses, poultry. This shall not include riding academies, library, or boarding stables or kennels. A single-family dwelling is permitted for the sole use of individuals and their immediate families engaged in agriculture and employment on the same site. So you'll notice that I'm without counsel tonight. I'm not making this a legal march. I want to gain your support. Hopefully, you see our vision, and, but I have no intention of pushing or driving this to a finish line. That's not what I do. With that being said, it's confusing to me if one were to sell this, even that house that's there, arguably, unless one is using it as a farm property, it's not even occupiable as a residence, as I understand the I-2 zoning. So let's move on. Other things you could do, a school. Any school, college, or university that is not conducted as a private gainful business as a commercial school. So one can make no income on the operation of whatever goes on there. That really narrows your scope of potential buyers and uses. You could do a public library, you could do a museum. I think it's important to note, if the society was so inclined, they could build a substantive facility there, which would totally change the face of this via clearing, asphalt, lighting, buildings, structures. They could hold wedding venues there because they're a nonprofit and probably stay well within the guise of the current zoning with nothing changing. I think that would be the worst-case scenario for the residents and the worst-case scenario for the community. That's a personal opinion. I'll leave you to judge after my presentation. Again, a private organization or community center, building facilities for fraternal education, social-cultural recreation activities, shall not be conducted, shall not be conducted as a private gainful business. Once again, cannot be profitable, it cannot be for income. They are a nonprofit, hence they have flexibility to move forward. One could put a municipal government building in. One could put a wireless communication facilities. One could put a wind energy facility there. I'm not sure about you, but changing the landscape, defiling this, there's nothing that's protecting those really iconic historic structures, to either have a wind farm or a rehabilitation facility, all fit that bill. All are the wrong answer for the town, and if I were a resident and friends that I have there, I wouldn't want to see that take place. But those are all things that can happen. Hence, my request to change back to what I'm about to show you, that I think is a super responsible use of the property. There is some transactional title changes of the property that's taken place over time. The next section is Jeff Marshall is what I would consider one of the most knowledgeable historians of Bucks County, specializing in barns and existing farmhouse properties. He truly dedicates his life and considers this a great attribute of his skill set to be able to bring reports. So I hired Jeff, and said, Jeff, I really need to know what is this property about? Where did it come from? What's the history? As I was looking to come up with a proper use to move forward. So I don't want to bore you, I'm going to read this super fast, but I think it's worth, this is an excerpt, anyone who wants true lineage, Jeff would be ready to share this novel that he's already created on this. This is my assistant Kayla, Zavetta Custom Homes, we're easily accessed. Kayla can hook you up with any information from Jeff. Kayla can send you or email you any of these prints that I have this evening. You don't need to run up with cell phones, you're welcome to, but I can send you 1117s electronically transmitted. We are truly planning to do this in more of a partnership venue and include you in all of the discussion. At some point in time, subject to the board's opinion of the presentation, I would go further and will hold a private information meeting that will be hosted at Mercer, which you'll all be invited to, and I'll answer each and every question to the best of my ability. I'll have Sharon, our skilled engineer there, to review all the details. And again, you can always call our office. I make. I make myself totally available. I'm not behind the curtain, not a big developer. I'm there nine to 10 hours a day, and will always take calls. So if you have something serious, you can call me. With that being said, I'm going to fly through the Jeff Marshall analogy, which has a lot of interest. The subject property was part of a 5,200-acre trustee of the Free Society of Traders, sold to Jeremiah Langhorn on March 25, 1724. The Free Society of Traders was organized in London in 1682 as a great trading and manufacturing corporation in order to attract capital and growth to the colony. It is likely that Benjamin Snodgrass was responsible for the construction of the major buildings on the property. He willed the property to James Snodgrass, 1803. When advertising for sale, the property listed a stone farmhouse, three rooms on the lower level floors, kitchen, stove room adjoining, and a stone barn. On March 18, 1831, Snodgrass sold the tract 108 acres, 53 perches, to Francis B. Shaw, Esquire in Doylestown, attorney, for the sum of $4,000. He had previously sold a 23-acre tract and 105 perches to Christian Clemens on 1817. After Shaw's death, the tract of 77 acres, 14 perches, was conveyed to the executor of William Shaw's, to William C. Shaw, February 27, 1847. Shaw sold all but two acres of the property to Johiah Hart on April 5, 1849. Hart subsequently acquired the adjoining tract of land that was part of the estate of George Hart in August 5, 1872. The first documentation of the name, Underhill Fountain Farm, appears in 1772, according to Jeff Marshall's research. With that being said, based on the precedent-setting time in a single family of ownership, it would be our intention to refer to the property with our endeavors as Underhill Fountain Farm circa 1772. With that being said, whereon resided, contained 90 acres was to go to a son John Hart. Subdivided the property to two selling parcels, 45 acres, 76 perches, to Frank Hart in December 1885. The Doylestown Trust Company, George Hart, and all its executors of will, George Hart, deceased along with Catherine Hart, widow, granted one-third interest property to George Hart, December 1994. The deed included the tract of 45 acres, 76 perches of land, excepting out therefrom a lot, a lot of 2.493 acres. George M. conveyed one-third interest of the property to Bucks County Historic Society on December 30, 1994. Residual interest was transferred to Bucks County Historic Society on November 3, 2003. As of this writing, the property consists of 24.22 acres and is zone I-2. That is the history of ownership, and it's just an impressive number to me, that 156 years of family ownership. All the more reason I'm dealing with this in an exceptionally sensitive manner and really trying to respect the lineage that this property comes from. With that being said, that we would be looking at it as the Underhill Fountain Farm, established Here is our proposed plan that Sharon Dots and I have worked on. We did some preliminary blockouts. Sharon brought me into good engineering compliance. Just to set the tone for this, we're talking about three new structures. This, at the end of the day, over half of this property will be permanent open space. Moreover, I'm saying three new structures, but if one takes a look at that first building on the right side of the screen with the white roof, that is a commercial storage building that was constructed. That will be coming down and going away. If one were to drop that directly in parallel on our building, I'm arguably building two new structures. Those two new structures measure approximately 165 feet long. Many of our houses, you may or may not be familiar with, start every bit of 165 feet long. 200 feet long is not outrageous. So in reflection, we're looking at two new substantive home sizes that I build every day of every week in many communities, preserving over half the property. Down in the left corner, you can see the barn and the house. I apologize because I can't use a laser on the screen, but that area is the existing barn and the existing house. We've skillfully navigated and placed the structures to work with the existing natural slopes. What I mean by that, and we'll see in just a few minutes, we're going to be structuring these as plausible original historic ag-related buildings. And as with an original ag-related building, I'll be using parking under the structures. We have just halved the impervious surface that could be happening. All the garages are not linear sprawl. They are, in fact, as a historic bank barn would have used. And more so, in that time, it was convenience and, yes, even price, but keeping their structures more conservative just because of the arduous task of building ag structures as a farmer is daunting. Nevertheless, this uses that same technologies which you'll see in short order. Set my back of this. So this is a brief summary of our, what we're suggesting. Construct three structures utilizing architectural lineage drawn from historic Bucks County barns, feed mills, and granaries. Each building will consist of 12 residential units with a 24-car parking area amidst the lower-level walkout replicating bank barn egress. Parking will be relegated to behind the structure. Can you go, just go back. I'll just read this. Go back to that. Parking will be relegated behind the structure, so consequently, the driveways and roads coming in will not be cluttered and littered with on-street parking. It'll appear to be a clean, clear lane that I can assure you, the fire safety folks from Doylestown will be elated to not be trying to weave around on-street parking, which is always a problem, especially in a crisis. We then have ample parking behind the structures as well to house for guests. Our Town's Edge facility, which we'll look at in just a minute, never, never has parking in the front, always, always has good parking for guest parking. By using this, getting half of it as a free byproduct of the structure speaks volumes to the conservation methodology used in this plan. We'll renovate the existing farmhouse. We'll recon, we'll build a garage to it that has no garage. The garage will be constructed to be historically plausible to match the house in scale, stone, materials, and craftsmanship. The barn will equally redo, and if my preference would be to sell this to someone dreaming of having a historic farmette in Doylestown with a house and a barn. If that's not successful, I would keep the barn's facade and render the barn into two dwelling units. Again, preference is to sell it as a small farmette self-contained. Tree cutting and general clearing would be administered judiciously as to maintain substantive, as to maintain the critical substantive wooded presence. This would exception, this would have exceptional importance to any of the existing residents amidst the perimeter of the property. When you look at these drawings, we have a minimum of 150 feet. That is the tight building to the property line. Moreover, upwards of 230, 250 feet, structure to structure. Most of the buildings have a far greater, I'm giving you the worst-case scenario. Most of your lots are 100 to 110 feet. So I'm arguably putting two of your existing lots in open space before I get to the property line. That is, and those are critical for both your sake, our vision, and the success of this community, and to be a responsible developer as to protect and work with all of the trees that we can possibly keep. So we are experts in working in sensitive areas. When we cut a tree, we hand-cut it. No, we don't take out a handsaw. We do fell them individually. We don't subscribe to the new methodology of sweep clearing, where one tree that you cut destroys four you hope to keep. We're fanatical in working with the township and their regulations of safety fencing for trees, all the appropriate measures to, as I said, to ensure that they are, in fact, there. It's super important for both you and me and our vision. Our goal would be to wind up coming in with some walking paths and trails around it to equally exemplify the natural beauty that the site has and holds. With that being said, Sharon, our skilled engineer, and I'm super excited to work with her because she's done many of our most complicated projects in different areas of our upper Mayfield, Buckingham. Moreover, in Doylestown as well, Pine Tree Farm Sharon was part of. We did Town's Edge in Doylestown. Sharon was the engineer. We put together the project. We work well together, and it's a great mix of technology and responsibility and outcome of aesthetically pleasing structures as a team. You've taken a quick look at this as far as not going on-site and doing invasive testing, but on a general note, at a B with the R4 and a B4 use group, you feel that we're looking at, you're looking at minimum waivers, correct? At a first pass?
At a first pass.
Right. So simple things like using aerial photography to document trees and so forth with the neighbors of how many feet? You have to, you're looking to document existing houses and some resources--
If you could come up to the microphone, that would be great.
Yes. Rather than doing an extensive survey, we would be, some of the minimum waivers we would look for is what you would typically see, where we use aerial photography in lieu of surveying great distances away from the property.
Also, our preference is not concrete curbs, but granite, Belgium block curb aesthetically, longevity, replacement-wise. So those are some of the things that we know we'd be hoping to get some waiver on, but they are very much minimalistic at this time. Town's Edge, I won't dwell on it, but since I've been using this as our design standard, I thought it may be worth to take just a few minutes to speed through this to show you what this means and what you'd be seeing. With that being said, this is indicating 12, the residential units, whereas there would be six on this floor. All the parking, for general parking, is in the back. Individual parking is underneath. The bottom line is, the road is designed to be clear, open, and free of parking. That's a rendering of the anticipation of the structure. Again, classic indigenous Bucks County barn. If one were to study that, you'll find different pieces of stone, different mortar joints, different window patterns, cold joint verticals, which would have been signs of add-on that building pressure would have already been resulting in the 1800s, where needs and changes of the structure were needed. Consequently, it does provide for a plausible structure. One of my biggest compliments on that building was I had several people say, Rich, I didn't know you were renovating that. I never noticed it was there. I'm there, my gosh, we actually did a good job. They believe that this was an existing structure. This is the actual building, and it infuses many barn-like qualities. You'll notice at close glance, infill of brick, infill of mixed-match stone, wood headers over windows, mixed grill patterns suggesting different time periods, twisted iron bar used that would have been recycled from collar ties of barns of that vintage using to cantilever some balconies, and could have equally been haydrop or hay-loading areas. Recycling barn wood to create trolley shutters, copper, traditional materials. There's no glue on stone. Everything is traditionally done. The light white mortar representing lime mortar that would have been correct for that vintage era. Interior, trying to make it replicate if there were grain towers or grain elevators being repurposed into modern elevators. Barn-like post-and-beam geometry, pins, pre-used brick floors, open, bright, everything that a multifamily dwelling would not have. Keep going, please. That's the back of the structure. This is what I was talking about by bringing parking beneath. Also, that parking area is pervious paving with stormwater storage under it. Each time I can do something like that, park underneath, use the pervious paving, is that much less cutting on the site. That's the reality, which proves that this actually works. All the details, all the way down to outside air compressors for HVAC, hidden behind wooden woven fencing, trying to have an ag cultural presence. Inside, generous parking tandem, easily fits two suburban XLs easily. Further, we play storage rooms direct ahead, so this cross-country skis, the bikes, the stuff you should have thrown out but didn't, has a place. The units themselves are probably around 2,000 feet, 2,100, so we wanted to make sure that we weren't using that premium space as we're trying to keep the footprints of the structures compact for living, not storing stuff. There's a real-life testament to the spaces that I'm talking about. Equally, those spaces are heated and air-conditioned, which our clients found extremely attractive. We ran even back in the day, power for electric chargers for all automobiles, so we're really pre-thinking everything. Plenty of space. There are the storage rooms up ahead with those doors that are jar. We have room for exercise facilities on-site. That's the outside. Copper roofs, rain chains, twisted iron for balconies, everything being in plausible configuration. Even in, even in that image, you can jump back one. That's a good place where you can see us doing window pane changing, two-over-twos versus, you know, six-over-six, trying to show different time periods where additions were fixed to this original barn. Inside, again, carrying barn-like flavor. That's departing the garage into lower foyers. Open stairs. We worked tirelessly with Sinclair, the building official for the township, to be able to get the look that I wanted while still adhering to fire safety, which I will tell you is expensive and challenging, but was well worth it. Details all the way down to mail. I don't want a giant community box outside. We worked it out with postal delivery to deliver inside, so it's orderly. It's less clutter outside, less activity outside. Again, bought lower level up to first floor, open space, barn-like construction, just more of the same. Everything that you would not find in a typical multifamily home. The interiors are modeled off of our high-end, larger structures. In fact, two of these units were bought by previous Zaveta customers, whereas they wanted a house in Florida, a house in Arizona, but had a passion for Doylestown presence. Balconies, as mentioned. Kitchens that are small versions of our high-end homes, high-end appliances. Bathrooms that are gracious and in keeping with what we're synonymous with. Full-size laundry rooms and real-life compliance for practical application. In this particular site, there was historic spring houses that we restored. We worked tirelessly as to create walking paths, worked with the natural indigenous trees, mixing in with plausible, non-invasive species landscaping to add credibility. Placing community gardens, community walkpaths, but not doing it as concrete or paver stones, actual real stone that would have been prevalent if this were in the 1800s. We took this structure, which the foundation is an original Doylestown wagon wheel crafting shop. The building itself was let go and not salvageable, so we replaced it by ordering sawn, Douglas fir timbers, rough sawn, and reassembling a plausible building. This would be the community area. I don't want barbecues, don't want things hanging out on those balconies, so this is relegated to keep things looking good. There's multiple community grills, fire pits, seating, just a delightful area for gathering and personal use. All the way down to trash, we're fanatical. I don't want trash blowing around. I don't want to see unsightly dumpsters. We're obsessed on recycling, so there's recycling bins, regular trash disposal, simple man door, walks-in, private trash haulers to haul out the bulk, so there's no mess, no disruption. The total unit count is, we envision, three 12-unit structures with historic attributes for a total of 36 dwellings. I will note, again, in two of the units, I had clients purchase two and combine them into one. It's officially as one dwelling, two dwelling units less for a total of 10. That does not shock me. Many of these people are used to having 4,000 feet, 2,000 maybe too lean. Nevertheless, that's what I'm planning for. We're going to convert the existing barn into two dwellings while maintaining the barn vernacular, restore the existing stone farmhouse. As previously mentioned, my preference is to sell that as a small farmette estate, and I think I've got a good chance at it, because if we can keep the price in order after restoration, it will provide somebody with an unparalleled opportunity to have a classic Bucks County structure. A worst-case scenario of 39 units. Our path-- Our path, our suggested path forward. So, with that being said, I'm going to take three more minutes, because I'm sure you're tired of hearing me talk, but I think the summary is important. I get it. As a resident, many of you may have believed that this is forever. There's always the overzealous salesperson that's great at promoting things that maybe is being stretched beyond reality, but this is private ground. I don't have to be the builder here. I would like the opportunity, because I think we can bring a lot to the table. They will be selling this. I'm honored that they're considering us to be able to come in and manage an appropriate concept that hopefully is the least impactful. I'd be misleading to tell you if I lived there and I'd become used to having this 22 acres, even though I'm not supposed to be trespassing, having it, looking at it, not being disrupted by it, I'm sure it's disappointing. My goal is to lessen the disappointment, but deal with reality. The one thing I can offer you, when I talk over 50% open space, hundreds of feet separation to structures, two new buildings that are replicating houses that I currently build, I would like to believe that that is a responsible level of development. That's what we stand for and that's what I believe in on this site. With that being said, I just can't imagine the I-2 machine being unleashed on this, because it won't look the same, in my opinion. Of course, there's always someone that could be philanthropic and just write the check and then it's a permanent park. That would be the best outcome, I'm sure, but remembering that could be no monetary gain for any application on this, that's a tall order. I would suspect, and this would not speak on behalf of the township, but I would suspect there's a limited chance that they even have the funds to just buy this and say, "Here's a park." That's for them to say, not me. Consequently, you know, I'm a firm believer in Bucks County Historic Society's mission. I further believe that not only the Bucks County residents benefit from their work, but the state, I hate to sound ridiculous, but people travel to their facility just to tour it as part of a trip. I think it's amazing what takes place there. I went there as a child in, from New Hope Elementary School as a tour of the facility, and it was amazing, even as a kid. Our commitment to them is that I will do the land development portion of this and I will agree to only be reimbursed my costs and overhead. I'm not looking to make any money on the land. I think there are very few developers that would put this energy and risk forward and make that statement. Yes, I expect to make some money on building the structures, no question. We are not a nonprofit, but I do plan to stand behind my commitment to their organization and defer from taking funds for land profit. That will go to them for their mission that I think is extremely important and very much I also think that our plan is tremendously positive, whereas it does not incentivize them to take the full R4. The full R4 is what you're currently residing in, many of you that live there. That would return them the absolute greatest return on their investment, hands down. I now talk like a professional developer, you know, the ROI, the return on the investment, the grid layout, the efficiency of mass production. That's how they get the most money out of this. They don't want to do it, I don't want to do it, and I'm hopeful that this presentation is at least giving you some pullback from, "This is horrible, make it stop." And, but I do understand that, and again, I can make myself available through Kayla, my assistant, it's Zaveta Custom Homes, and there will be a forthcoming, with the township's permission, on their information sheet of a meeting where we will get together. And again, anybody that wants a copy of this, just call Kayla. She'll email it to you. You don't have to, you're welcome to take pictures, I'm just telling you. She can make your life much easier. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. I appreciate your presentation. I think we're all aware of your reputation for being an excellent builder. We're all aware of Bucks County Historical Society's interest, and I suspect there's some people who are going to have questions.
With that, if you would like to ask some questions or make some comments, please step up to the microphone.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Zaveta. My name is Christine Boyd. I am an attorney. I live at 375 Birdsong Way. My house backs up to the property that we're discussing. I have a couple of questions. You're talking about 36 to 39 separate units on this property, is that correct?
Not separate, no ma'am. We're talking about three structures.
Excuse me, individual units. In other words, each could potentially be inhabited by a family.
There would be a concept of 12 dwellings per building with three buildings.
Are these one-floor?
Yes.
So...
The living areas are one-floor. As I mentioned in showing that floor plan of our Town's Edge, there are six on the first floor, six on the second floor, total of 12, 24 garages beneath.
And access to the second floor is through an interior space?
All interior stairwell, those open stairwells that you saw, that are built with substantive wood and agricultural-type staircases of heft, inclusive of a stair. There are no, the inexpensive way to do this, which is that many of the professional developers' vehicles of choice, is external stairwells. They're treated lumber, they don't need to be fire suppressed, outdoor trash chutes, everything that I don't like about multifamily building, we are not doing here.
What's your anticipated price point for the sale of these units?
We finished a Town's Edge at a million two. I would suspect that based on the epic inflation and the cost rising, that we'll be entering around a million five to start.
Per unit?
Per dwelling, yes.
Per dwelling, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and there will be 12 in each of these buildings?
There will be three buildings with 12 families per building.
When I look out my back door, sit on my deck, I see deer, I see fox, as well as many birds and squirrels. What's your anticipated reaction of those animals to this additional building in that space?
What I have personally witnessed is that the animals that you're referring to, unfortunately, have become used to domestic surround. Gone are the days of the hundreds of acres of free-range space. Foxes, there's over on Fox Hill Road in Doylestown Township. My sister resides there, and it is riddled with foxes, and it is a full residential community with far less separation between buildings. They will reside there, they, obviously, they adapt. Squirrels unequivocally adapt. Squirrels will accost the bird feeders and do what squirrels do. Birds certainly frequent this. Most bird experts will tell you that field growth that is unmoed is the prime habitat for Pennsylvania birds, not necessarily pure woodlands.
I don't want to keep up any more of your time, because I'm sure other people have questions, but with the building of the new Wawa across the street from Doylestown Hunt, there's been a tremendous increase in traffic and it's become much more difficult, for example, to make a left-hand turn when one is coming off the bypass to head into Doylestown. What do you anticipate to be the traffic impact of your building?
One of the things that will be required to do will be a traffic study. Sharon's firm will be conducting that study. We have not done that yet, because I have not committed to doing this project yet. Today was an exploratory look, but we would be required to do a full traffic study. I can tell you, it's of my opinion, that this would relegate far less traffic than a full-blown I-2 use group.
That's, my question isn't comparing this to a full I-2 use. My question is, what you anticipate with your building will be the impact on traffic coming past our neighborhood?
Well, logistically, each family most likely will own two automobiles. If there are 36 dwellings, it's 36 times two. At this particular price level, I don't necessarily envision folks being gainfully employed at a day job with both departing at eight to five Monday through Friday. Many of these folks will either be retired and have limited trips to Wawa and/or other places in town, but it is not like a young, I don't anticipate it being a young family community predicated on the price, with numerous kids, all going to special events, all being sherpered by good-serving parents as roadmasters for them.
I still have many questions, but I'm going to sit down, because I assume many of my neighbors as well have questions. I thank you for your time and I thank the supervisors.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Tony Grusevich. I'm a neighbor of Christine's. I live at 373 Birdsong. And my question is, are, there's going to be 12 units, if you will, in each building. Who's going to manage the building? Who does snow removal? Who maintains the exterior?
In our Town's Edge community, we assembled a consortium of our affiliate contractors. Equally, Zaveta Custom Homes has a division of Zaveta Home Services, where we maintain many of these states' snow, lawn, full building maintenance. So, we at a minimum would be setting up an appropriate consortium of experts that are not just generic maintenance people, but specialized in working on our homes with the natural materials and the frequency of maintenance they need. That would all be in place. We would then hold an HOA meeting, whereas I would present that to our HO, to the new HOA, with all of our contractors in place. More than that, they're quite pleased with the service, because we are able to keep the prices under control, knowing the critical maintenance structures of our own buildings.
Yeah, would there be a homeowners association?
Yes, sir.
For each building or all, the whole complex?
I would envision this, since there are three buildings of similar units, three buildings of similar vernacular, three buildings of similar maintenance, that it would be a single HOA as to divide the cost for the, because there's a tremendous amount of road in this that doesn't front buildings. It's not a typical development. Consequently, I think in the fairness aspect, the first building, I don't want to get involved with the first building claiming, "Oh, my gosh, we only use a small portion of the road," so it would be universally divided across.
Hmm. That's basically my initial question.
Thank you.
Again, the slides and the presentation text, so forth and so on, but giving email address, can they be sent to me?
We can send you, Kayla is your contact person and she will efficiently get them out as you might direct. She'll probably need Dropbox, just because of the size of the file. I understand. Thank you, sure.
Just to interject on the email thing, Stephanie, can we also make that available as a point through the township to Zaveta as well?
Yes. Yes, we can do that as well. Any other questions? Oh, just come on up and have a line if you'd like. It's fine.
Hi, my name's Bob Coniston. I live on Fox Chase Lane, that house that has the white roof. My question is, at the present time, the area is, in my opinion, dangerous because of falling trees, falling limbs, and an abundance of downed trees. It's a fire hazard. What are you proposing to do in all that open space in which, right now, is a lot of dead trees?
That's an excellent question. I live in Tinicum Township and I probably have 200 ash trees on our property that I'm afraid that my kids walk around or walk dogs with my wife. We will be going through this, through this property and doing forestry maintenance in accordance with township zoning. Dead fall, precarious limbs, dead trees that are hanging, will all be responsibly cleaned up, and again, it will be done in a skillful method while using equipment, but not sweeping the forest. I want to leave it in a responsible condition for your perimeter, for our inhabitants of the community, for the good of all.
And if you're going to do an aerial view, do it right now, before the trees start growing branches on it, or you will never see what is hidden underneath those trees.
I appreciate the advice. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jack Kearns. I live in Doylestown Hunt for about the past 30 years. I guess my question is to Historical Society, when the property was donated to them, were there any specifications by Mr. Hart about how you should manage the property and whether or not you could sell it?
There's no restrictions on the property whatsoever.
So, he left no information about it, because there's been rumors going on for like the past, since I've been here, that the property was donated, but there was a specification that it would never be sold or something like that?
Yeah, I heard that too. I heard that recently, that there was a 100-year trust, but that never existed. There's been no, no anything put on, no covenants, no restrictions or anything put on the properties.
And my next question, it's been already discussed about the traffic pattern. I've been here for 30 years and I can tell you that I've seen a tremendous change in traffic patterns. And between the borough, building all this multi, all these housing up there, the problem is going to be is that, you know, where do people park? But I'm concerned about coming out of the hunt, because I have problems coming out, either making a right turn or a left turn, especially like during the morning hours and in the evening, the traffic. And I know that there's an accident waiting to happen at Wawa one of these days, and coming out of that is going to even increase those opportunities, so.
Sharon is our expert and I'll certainly make point to her to take special concern with trying to be responsible with traffic flow.
Hi there, I'm Greg Coverdale. I live at 368 Birdsong Way. I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about your stormwater protection plan? I know we're very early in the process, but obviously, as a builder, you know, when you start moving dirt, that impacts the surrounding area. Those of us in the hunt already have some issues with street flooding from time to time. So, during the construction process, what's the plan? And when those silt fences come down after construction, if there's an impact, and this would be to the township, if there's an impact to the surrounding homes, who's liable for that? You know, how do we get recourse for that?
I would agree. Stormwater management is everyone's concern. It's a multi-fold undertaking. One, there's been more development, more impervious, more water flow, but even more shocking than that, again, I've, you know, I've been in business for 45 years in Doylestown and I now see storms that I used to call 100-year storms, 100 days, crazy, crazy volumes. I can tell you that, you know, we have worked tirelessly in extremely sensitive areas down in Upper Makefield, along the stream, that several months ago had the explosive concentrated flood, where children's lives were lost being swept away in cars. I've worked extensively in Solbury Township, on the Pana Cossing watershed, where there, the entire village of Carbersville is concerned with every square foot that goes down. We have our own in-house excavation team. We specialize in complex lots, complex resources, and at the end of the day, Sharon is here, not by accident. I've got confidence in her organization, and I can also tell you that your township engineer is equally sensitized, as I am, of the new concerns. I don't hide, if we have a silt fence that goes out, we are all over it. We use newer systems with such a super silt fence, which is almost impossible to blow out, backed up with silt sock, which is a progressive new technology, using a fabric that's filled with mulch, stake to the ground, a secondary backup. So, we have redundancy on redundancy. Our office is five minutes from here. Our excavation crew is 24/7 available. I can't swear to you that everything will be flawless, but I can tell you that in my entire career, inclusive of Doylestown, we have never been cited or penalized with penalties associated with being irresponsible with stormwater management, mud in the road, blowing trash, inappropriate construction workers. I can only tell you I have 45 years running clean. I have no reason to jeopardize that for this job.
Thank you for that. For the township, when the builder moves on after the project is complete, if there are stormwater issues, where does that liability lie? Does that go back to the builder? Is that upon the residents, the township?
Our township engineer can probably address a little bit better, but they would typically come to, any questions, comments would come to the township, and then we would possibly go back to the developer if there is a problem that is not being met. And if not, since this is going to be a completely private property owned by the homeowners association, it would be their responsibility.
I can tell you, having crafted some of these documents to township standards, first in line up the dedication, the dedication of the property is an arduous task where everything is flawlessly checked and checked and checked. I'm 100% responsible. I'm probably going to be requested by the municipality to sign a covenants and maintenance agreement. Basically, our homeowners association will inherit that responsibility when I turn it over. I believe the language will say, and this will be subject to the township, I'm not speaking on their behalf. However, the township will first contact, if I'm still involved, us. If I'm not still involved... If I'm not still involved, the HOA remains responsible. Equally, in the documents of that HOA, each member will acknowledge that if there's a stormwater problem and it's not taken care of, that the township, they grant the township the right to come in, remediate, and charge for such. Those are the agreements that I'm used to. I'm not speaking on their behalf, just sharing my experience.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Hi, everybody. My name's Chris. I live on Fox Chase Lane. I have two questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Referring to the graphic, I see, I understand the yellow and red line is obviously the property line. Then I see a faint red dash line, like, right next to it. Curious as to what that is, and then the thick...
Sure, it's the limits of disturbance. The dash for a broken line.
Are you referring to this?
No, I'm sorry. I will be. But the first one, right next to the yellow and red property line, there's a faint one, like, maybe a centimeter away from it. See it right there? Yeah.
It's the building setback line.
Okay.
So, that's the minimum required setback. We can't put buildings any closer than that.
Gotcha, okay.
And as you can see, we're well inside that.
Right. And then the thicker red dash line, is that going to be, is there going to be a fence or anything like that? Or is it just going to be...
This is our anticipated open space, is everything outside that line, that red line.
But right where that line crosses over into the non-open space, what is going to be there? Is there going to be anything there? Or is this just going to be mowed, like, grass or mulch or something?
To be determined.
To be determined, okay.
We're very early in this stage.
It could be ground cover. I want to have aesthetic appeal. Just generating folks' lawn is not typically something I'm excited about, but preferably some form of natural covers that would make sense in the indigenous department.
Okay. Are you going to be putting up a fence of any sort?
I don't intend to be fencing the corridors. I personally feel that draws attention to the borders. I like the idea of the natural woodlands and think that that probably improves the residents adjoining.
Okay. And then my last question is, if it does go through the construction process, how long does that typically take?
That's a tough one based on the economy base. First of all, there's a lot of, a huge amount of time before we begin with that. This is a very, I hate to say arduous, but arduous process to go through. So, we have a tremendous amount of time, a tremendous amount of time to even begin to start. Typically, when we start site improvements, I would like to say that we could do in six to eight months for site improvements. Will be required, especially predicated on the sensitivity of any type of stream, quarters, wetlands. We need to have this totally stabilized before I'm even allowed to start to dig a basement. So, we're now probably rolling out to a year before I can even start. We can build one of these buildings in less than a year. And it will totally depend on sales and absorption ratios of how many do we start? Do I plan to start all at once? Probably not. It's a, we're seeking a select market of a special buyer that will, I feel, be an amazing neighbor and an asset to the community.
So, if you had to guess me, would you say between two and three?
I think three would not shock me.
Okay.
I would love to say two and be right. It's just subject to the fluxing economy, which my crystal ball is super hazy right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I interject here? Can I, please?
Sure, Barbara.
Can I interject here? I think, let's not all get ahead of ourselves. This is just a presentation on a concept. And we'll have to go through the planning process and then land development process. So, a whole lot of what we're talking about will be addressed later on. But first, it has to go through the planning commission, I would think. And it's an interesting concept, and I appreciate the time. But just want to tell everybody who's listening and who's in the room that this is just a presentation on a concept. And it has to, there's a lot of approvals and considerations that have to, that has to undergo before we get any further.
Okay. Like to thank everybody for their questions. Is there additional? I'll give you like two minutes. Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
My name's Jessica Lindy. I live on Tally Hill Way. I have access or full view of the retention pond. Have you looked at it, or will you be studying it? Because that, on a heavy rainfall, piggybacking off of Mr. Coverdale, that does fill up. And where does all that water flow? Because obviously, wherever your growing, uh, building is downhill, and...
Just the pond itself.
Well, and it's, I guess it's not really a pond, but it will fill up.
Well, it will fill up as it sits naturally. Will be required by the municipal engineer as it does stormwater management controls. My vehicle of choice in stormwater management is what I refer to as subsurface, very large underground chambers via gravel PVC collection boxes to do recharge to the aquifer, consequently leaving the surface less scarred up. So, this pond per se may very well wind up just as an aesthetic pond, but maybe not even part of stormwater.
You mean yours or our current? I'm not sure.
There's a pond site on.
I know there's a pond site on, but our retention will fill up, that dumps down that way. And that's what I'm just hoping somebody...
That will be forthcoming for Sharon, but I can tell you that with regard to this site, she'll be held to task that no more cubic feet of water in an elapsed time can depart this pre-construction than post-construction. So, there's a huge amount of tech work that still has to happen.
Okay. My other comment, concern, whatever, taking it backing off of Chris, is the aesthetics of the ground cover currently. Currently, since Wawa went in, their lights kind of come through. Obviously, there's no leaves on the trees just yet. So, by taking down some of that coverage, it's going to, like, the pictures you showed, well, that's a full-grown place. It's going to take us a while if you're taking stuff down. And obviously, you haven't said that you are or aren't. But I would like that to be considered because we take on that light. And speaking with lights, the only thing about your whole plan here, I didn't hear anything about what the lighting was going to be because that definitely reflects our way.
Well, I'm a large fan of limited, limited ambient light, enough to safely navigate. Sinclair Salisbury, the township building inspector, his hobby is making sure that we have what's called dark skylighting that do not reflect or depart the site. Each spotlight, if there are any, he demands to have hooded shields so that the light does not leave the site. With regard to the trees, as I get further into this, if you've got a concern, I've got a concern. We're selling some high-priced real estate, and I very well may be looking to add buffer as well to lessen those lights. I'm not committing to that, but you have my, you have my attention.
Well, thank you.
I just want to emphasize what Barbara had said, that this is really the very first that we've seen this. There's, we're not really that far into the process. If you're interested in keeping abreast of this, please watch for our agendas that are coming up. Go to our website, our, if you get letters, we sent letters to all of you to invite you here.
No, you didn't.
Well, well, I'm sorry. Let me clarify. There are parameters to the letters that we send out.
We, we are not required to do the letters. However, since the late 1980s, we have sent letters to adjacent property owners when a project such as this begins the process. So, those who are adjacent receive the letters.
Thank you.
We post our agendas. If the applicant is of a mind to go further in the process, as Ms. Lyons indicated, they would then make application, formal applications to the township. They have to think about doing, and he mentioned it, a zoning change, and then eventually, land development. A lot of your questions about trees, landscaping, traffic, come in the land development timeframe. So, I would say at this point, we've kind of been informed of what the Bucks County Historical Society is proposing for this property. And I think the ball is in their court where to then figure out what their next steps are in the process and whether they're going to go through that process.
Right. So, the next plan, the next step is, if they decide to move forward with this, it would go to the planning commission. And you're all welcome to come. It is a public, public meeting as well.
I had something last to, I know you kind of cut me off here, but something for whether it's the township or you to consider fixing the roads beca, at 202, the on and off ramps. They have big bumps that they actually radiate into our cul-de-sac when trailers hit. And so, that would affect your buyers that wouldn't want to hear that noise. So, if you could just make that a consideration.
Thank you for pointing that out. I would say that 202 is a state-owned and maintained roadway. And we concern, that needs to go to PennDOT, so.
We will pester PennDOT, as we always try to do.
Okay, a couple more?
Hi, Nick Solomon, Fox Chase Lane. My question's for the Historical Society. So, you're selling this land to then use the money to benefit, you know, your other primary properties. Is there any residual income you'll receive off of this? Or is it just a lump sum, selling the land to be done?
We don't know at this point. I'm just going to echo what Stephanie and Jennifer said. This whole thing was just to give an idea of this is where we're going. Wherever that winds up has got several hoops to jump through. We just realized and have decided, as an organization, that the two secondary properties need to feed the primary properties. And our primary concern is always going to be the Mercer Museum and Font Hill Castle. So, whatever we have to do to hold them up, that's what we're going to do. But as far as how much money, have no idea. Are we going to go with Rich? We have no idea yet. This is just the initial conversation to let the township know this is what we are thinking about. And they will help us move forward as we see fit. But I do not have a dollar amount.
So, I guess just my suggestion then is, once you maybe have a dollar amount, if then, maybe we could also seek other partnerships. Maybe the township can go in on it with Del Valle University or something as another alternative to still get you your money, but not have the development. So, I just want to make township think about that.
Good evening. Jeff McEary at One Steeple Chase Drive. So, first of all, to the Historical Society, thank you for everything you do. All the buildings, all the museums, we all visit those beautiful facilities, and I think that's great. However, I did hear some things that are of concern. You said that you've had conversations for the last six years, since 2018. The residents that are directly all along this property were given less than six days of knowing exactly any of these conversations that were going on. I understand there were letters that were sent out. We received those the day before Easter, which only gave us a couple days to, to even be here tonight.
I didn't mean public conversations. I meant internal conversations with our board of directors and our leadership. We didn't know exactly how we were going to prioritize and what our future was going to look like. So, we didn't have any public conversations yet. Rich and I will, we will. I think he even mentioned, we will invite people to the Mercer when we're ready with more content.
No, that's definitely fair enough. But you also stated, we have decided to do this, which is, which is fine, which is your prerogative. But that said, just a question. What, what amount of money would you be seeking for that property? Let's say homes were...
Again, I have no idea what the dollar amount would be. It's not just the dollar amount. It's...
And I heard that tonight, so.
The secondary properties that we are property managing right now that I think have a better way of serving us to serve the Font Hill Castle and Mercer Museum. But I do not have a dollar amount.
If you arrive at that number, or a number becomes, you know, that you're aware of, that'd be great because there could be potentially some fundraising, some people we can reach out to, to try to meet your end goal, to receive money, let's, let's be real. And we can maybe try to meet that end state for you.
Absolutely.
So, if you can just let us know. That said, the other thing is, the big thing, I think, is the, the light pollution. So, even when, even in the summertime, when those trees are full of leaves, I'm a tall guy, and the leaves kind of start like right here. So, we can see all the way through. So, you know, our neighborhood has no streetlights. So, maybe we don't need streetlights even in this neighborhood. I know you're going to minimize those, I heard you say, which is fine. But just be aware that light pollution is very present from Wawa that many of us can see. So, as this progresses, we would be grateful if you'd take that into consideration about the lighting because that's a big thing. Potentially, some of those Green Giant Arborettes or something all along the perimeter, 12-foot tall, et cetera, they would kind of block or mitigate some of that light pollution that definitely reaches all of our homes. That was the biggest concern, the light pollution. And a little bit of some more dialogue you could have had with the development that surrounds that. So, maybe we could have a direct connection to some of us to have some dialogue and input. But I think six years is an internal discussion. We just heard about this three or four days ago, so.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And we aren't going to be taking any action on this tonight. This was just informative. So, we're going to have to move on with our agenda. You can have 30 seconds.
I have a concern I'd like to express to the Historical Society. There are historic buildings that he's talking about taking down and replacing.
No, no.
And, or rehabbing, changing the, the dynamics of. And is it really, if, if the mission of the Historical Society is, and I support you, and we've been to those museums, if your mission is to preserve Bucks County and preserve the Doylestown area, I don't understand how building houses, building $36 million units on this property fulfills your mission. I understand you need money to run those other properties, but this is an important property, not just to us, but to the community. And I'd like to think that the Historic Society, after six years, would give this some consideration.
Thank you, thank you. I would like to thank everybody for coming out today on this topic. Like I said, this was an initial conversation. Please keep involved. Keep an eye out on our website and our future agendas. And Mr. Zaveta and the Historical Society are also very open to having conversations with you. So, please take advantage of that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you. You're very thoughtful in your description of how you would use the property. You're very thoughtful in being mindful to the history of Bucks County. I'm a lifelong native of Bucks County, so I certainly appreciate that. Obviously, people panic, as you said. My only concern would maybe be what the environmental piece of that looks like. A lot of swales that come up. I'm sure that's when you talk about the topography, that's going to be your challenge probably. And also, that turn onto 202. I agree, is really sort of scary. My only other question is, when you talk about trails, would you be connecting your trail? I never, you know what?
I think this is a little bit ahead of, ahead of game.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to ask, just for, for all the public, Jen, what are the next steps so that the public understands?
The next steps, as I said earlier, was that this would, if they decide to move forward with this project, it would be going on to the planning commission. So, please keep an eye out for the agenda. Is there anything else I'm missing? I think that simply...
They would have to make an official application for zoning change and go, and that would be gone to the planning commission. My sense, my sense from the presentation is you still have a lot of i's to dot, a lot of t's to cross prior to making any formal application to the township. So, it could be months, several months, before we see an application.
And that we, we also have to amend the ordinance if, if we do decide...
Change would be required as well.
Yeah, that would take quite some time as well.
Right. So, if you're getting, if I understand this correctly, if you're getting the packet from Zaveta, you'll see he listed in his presentation what's currently allowed under the current zoning. And what he's proposing is a change in that zoning.
So, we'd have to approve that as a board.
Right, that's correct. So, I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Thank you again.
I'd like to thank the board for hearing us. I also hope that the residents hear me clearly. We are not the typical developer. I am a local person. I appreciate your concerns and will work diligently as to speak to the particulars that you brought up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll wait a moment. And next up, we'll have the Meister property. And next up, we'll have the Meister property. Are we staying on new business? We're going to stay on our new business, through the new business, and then we'll go back. Because they're residents.
Yeah, we're staying on.
Staying on new business for now. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have additional items on our agenda. If you could please move on to the lobby area, exit the building.
Folks, 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 if we could have you exit, if you're.
Thank you, chief.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I made the presumption that I'm next. I should be able to sit down.
Good presumption. Sorry, I did say the, the Meister property was next, but it was a little loud.
I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Mike Meister and Kevin Riley from Filmon Properties. We're here tonight in a little bit different footing than the prior applicant was in the sense that since Mike and Kevin bought this property in 2016, we've been wrestling with what would be the most appropriate redevelopment strategy for the property. And tonight would be probably almost two and a half years since we started having staff meetings and conversations with, multiple staff meetings with Stephanie and her group, and then with the Planning Commission. And during the course of that time, from October of '21 till last spring, we considered multiple different development scenarios, including residential, office, medical use, and warehouse. All of which, except for residential, are either permitted by right or by special exception in the zoning district VC4 that the property is located in. And most recently, we appeared last summer, or spring, May of 2023, and we went to your zoning hearing board to get a special exception for a 35,500-square-foot warehouse. That application engendered a lot more substantive and direct conversation with the immediate residential neighbors that surround the site. And since that appearance that we made last spring before your zoning hearing board, Kevin and Mike have had multiple conversations with the neighbors. And we're here tonight because we believe that we've reached a consensus with the majority of the neighbors as to their preferred development scenario for this site. So what's on the screen? If I can just provide a little context, and I'll turn it over to Kevin and Mike. The property. Better? The property that's on the screen, it's an L-shaped, it's five acres. And as I think most people know, it's up on the border between Doylestown Township and Plumstead, which is across Ferry Road. And it has frontage on Ferry, on Neal, and on 313. As I mentioned, the first application and the plan that was approved by special exception has been rendered on the screen, and it shows a 35,500-square-foot warehouse. Adjacent to the former Aldifer Auction Storage Facility, now an athletic performance center, that's at the corner, that's, you see the white roof there. The warehouse plan that's on the screen contemplated access to and from Neal Drive. It didn't have access onto Ferry. That, the area Ferry, as you can see, contemplated a stormwater detention facility. And we have not engineered the land development plan that supports that warehouse use. We've also had plans that have not been actively pursued for a 50,000, two-floor medical office use and a general office use. Medical office has more interest in today's market, especially in the environment we're in, less so for regular office. But the medical office slash office option, those are uses permitted by right in this district. Warehouse was by special exception. And residential, not at all. So the question for all of us is, given its location, what surrounds it, and its zoning, what makes the most sense? Staff ultimately said, why don't you go and have a more direct dialogue with the neighbors? And when you think you have reached some understanding with a majority, come and see us. So that's why we're here tonight. You can expect to hear from representatives of the neighbors after we're finished. They're all here. So what I'd like to do is have Kevin and Mike, because they had the direct contact with and conversations with the neighbors, they can come up and share with you where we've ended up with conversations with the neighbors about the type of residential development, the intensity of it, and the advantages that, as a group, we and the neighbors think might represent the best redevelopment alternative for the township and everybody as a whole. So Kevin, if you want to pick up where we were last summer after our zoning application was approved.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Riley, and I am the Vice President of County Builders. Everything that I had said was accurate, and then Mike and I kind of took it from there. At our May meeting, when we did get our special exception for this warehouse plan, we did hear the neighbors and we heard their concerns. So we ended up meeting with them in the middle of June to start to discuss a potential residential plan. We met onsite or around the corner. We actually met two straight weeks in the evening. And we, we heard their concerns. We, we showed them our residential condominium plan that we had contemplated, which was 32 condominiums in four buildings. I believe what you'll hear is, what we heard was, the number one concern was access. They don't want access out to Neal Drive. They have safety concerns for their children and also just for general traffic. So we compromised and told them that we'd be willing to take access out to Ferry Road and put in underground detention out, out there. I'm going to move on to the townhome plan. What we received in the town, from, from the neighbors was still, you know, concern with density, with our plan layout. So Mike and I did some soul searching, and we decided, and they said, if you can, you know, maybe go to, you know, less units and possibly townhouses or singles. So Mike and I did some soul searching. We put together a plan for townhomes. Caroline is in the, the crowd. She was the one that I was conversing with over email. They have a Facebook group for their, for their neighborhood. So she assured me that she was going to share the plan, which she did with all of her neighbors. And then she did get back to me. So this is the townhome plan. This plan, it shows 23 townhomes. And the major difference in this plan is that we're willing to, to take the access out to Ferry Road with just an emergency access out to Neal Drive, which would be grass pavers and, and bollards with a chain. So we want it to affect the neighbors in any way. We're still proposing a 50-foot wide buffer along the folks on Tedwell Drive. They're highly impacted. We also have about 50 feet of grass space between Neal Drive and our proposed homes. For the two homes that are on, that are on Neal Drive, I believe those folks are here as well today. We've built this townhome before in Newtown Township at a project called Walden Square. The townhome is 28 feet wide by 58 feet deep. It's a, it is every bit of a, a luxury townhouse. You know, this day and the age, I'll just be honest, you know, I think it's very conservative, you know, 800,000 to a million to start probably would be what we're looking at. They're two-story, two-car garage, two-car driveway. They are three-bedroom, two and a half bath, usually with a finished basement. They come equipped with an option for an elevator so that you can age in place. We would prefer this not to be age-restricted. That demographic is changing all the time. So, but what you're going to get is, you're probably going to get 60% to 70% will be over the age of 55 just because of the price point. So we can put a master on the ground floor, that's not standard. But it is standard to put an elevator, so you can take an elevator up to second floor. So you can age in place in, in these homes. Again, that project was 56 townhomes in Newtown Township called Walden Square. David Drive, if you wanted to look it up, it's off of Newtown Yardley Road. We built that about six or seven years ago. We're very, very proud of that project. Back to the rendering. We show sidewalk all through the site. We show sidewalk along the frontage of Route 313 and Neal Drive. When we met with staff, they, they were strongly urging us to provide sidewalk from our site entrance on Ferry Road up to the intersection of 313 and Ferry Road, and we're willing to do that. We haven't updated the rendering, but you can consider that done if we are moving forward. We, we would provide sidewalk to that intersection so that it's a signalized intersection, then we have a pedestrian connection safely over to Fountainville Village, where the CVS and the Roman Delight are, and the, and the shopping center, and also to the Bally Square Shopping Center, both of which Mike Meister has built. Mike and I built Bally Square together, and Mike built Fountainville Village. Mike still owns both of those properties. So, so, so Mike owns two of the corners already, and this is three out of the four corners. So we would definitely put our heart, heart, soul into this and, and give it our best effort and definitely bring the neighbors and Doylestown Township something that they could be very proud of.
I don't see any resolution or recommendation from the Planning Commission. Can someone speak to that?
We have not been in front of the Planning Commission since
22?
June of '22, Barbara, that's right.
Yeah.
We were there. We presented a version of this plan, a little more dense, with a draft of a proposed ordinance. Planning Commission didn't prefer residential. They preferred either a village plan or some sort of over-under retail residential. And that was not something that we thought was appropriate, and I don't think the residents thought was appropriate, so.
I see, I see the, I see the, the Planning Commission notes, I'm sure, and all the other members have them as well.
Right.
Why are you not going back to the Planning Commission with this new idea?
Just because we didn't want to continue to spin wheels. We wanted to find out if this had any merit, and the neighbors wanted some more direct response as well. So when we talked to staff, we just said, why don't we come to the board when it's appropriate? And that's what they thought. Look, we can go to the Planning Commission again. I just don't know what the reaction would be, if it would be different.
Right, well, I think that's the appropriate next step, would be go, going to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, go back there, Ed. Because, because there's so many issues that I'm not comfortable passing on this, your proposal, without the Planning Commission passing on your proposal.
I think the neighbors want to be heard.
Right.
We are uncomfortable going back without having the support of the neighbors. And whether or not we get support from Planning Commission or Board, who knows? But I think the plant, the neighbors would like you to hear what they think before we go any further.
We can open.
Yeah, that's great, but I think they also need to go to the Planning Commission to be heard. I mean, that's where the, not, you know, not the.
And they'll have to make a formal application as well.
Yeah, I, I should have said.
Yeah, and start that process.
We have not, we did prepare a draft of an ordinance that would accommodate this. Planning Commission didn't want to look at that because they didn't think a strict residential option would be appropriate. So, we do have a draft, we have not pursued it. Steph's right, we have not made any formal application yet to do anything. So at some point, we'll either choose to do one of the options, or if we can figure out a way to work with the neighbors, we would do that. That's why we're here, so.
All right. Is there any public comment on this? It's a long night. You could go to this one, just say your name and.
Okay, I'm Caroline Gimble. Do you need any other information?
No, it's fine.
So I think, speaking for the neighborhood, I think that we all appreciate the communication that we've had from their team. And we understand that there's still official submittals and a process where they'll go through permitting, and there will be other opportunities to speak as well. But I know I personally would be very for a small residential housing community like they have suggested, especially over some of the other spaces that are currently allowed in the area. I also believe that it is, like they said, much safer for our neighborhood. I think that, speaking from the neighbors, it would feel more like another neighborhood rather than an office space or a high-traffic area. And the way that they've posed it off of Ferry Road, I'm very in support of. I also think that they've done a very good job buffering our neighborhood from what they're posing, so it won't feel intrusive in our space like some of the earlier schemes had. So I would hope that you guys would take into consideration the way that we all feel. And I know some other neighbors may feel the same, may not. But when you're considering other uses for this space, that possibly residential could work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Turner. So I've been in the neighborhood for almost eight years. And we've seen Wawa's being proposed, methadone clinics, warehouses, condos. And our neighborhood has stood before this, this organization and said, nope, not good. Don't like it, not going to do it. And so we fight you guys every single step of the way, every time there's been one of these other opportunities available for that lot. So by working with the builders, we've actually come to a resolution that makes us go, yeah, this actually isn't so bad, like kids on bicycles, winning. Wawa and gas in our water, maybe not so much. So, you know, the property is going to change, it's going to evolve over time. We know it. And this is a really great solution that not only meets our needs, it solves some of the environmental impacts that we have. There's a lot of folks in our neighborhood on well water. So, you know, what's going into that land and how it's going to be filtered into our drinking system for the rest of the neighborhood is important to us. So who else is going to be going through that space? How safe is our neighborhood? What are our property values? Where is this long-term? Because our neighborhood has been turning over. A lot of the original occupants that bought in the 1960s and early 1970s are aging out, and we're starting to see a lot more younger families. We have kids under five. There's a whole group of 12 kids that are like going into high school, but then there's a whole bunch more that haven't started kindergarten. And so when we talk about the demographics that we're meeting the needs for and where our interests are, what's going next door is incredibly important. I think we can all recognize that Swamp and Ferry are very, very busy roads. And no matter where the exit goes, it's going to impact traffic on 313 and Ferry. We have stoplight issues. So when we talk about what's going in there and what type of traffic is going to be going in and out all day long, residential makes a better sense in how we're going to be flowing through that type of environment. So it's not only good for the neighborhood, it's also good for those corners. It's good for us building out traffic. Hopefully, something will go in the village grill soon. But, you know, as we kind of look at what that's going to mean from a community perspective, I think that this is a better fit, and I hope that you guys would take those things into consideration as we move forward in this process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for everybody that came out regarding this property. Keep an eye on the Planning Commission, is there? Oh, I'm sorry, there's another comment?
Sorry, I just wanted to comment as well. My name's James Lupko, just to touch on what Caroline and was saying. And just, we're very happy that the builders have been working with us, having these meetings. I'm amongst the group of people with young children. I have a two-year-old and a five-year-old. We don't have sidewalks in our neighborhood. The road is the sidewalk for our kids, you know, we like that safety. The builders have been very open to hearing our thoughts on that with how we handle traffic, keep things safe for our kids, keep the environmental impact safe to a minimum, keep, you know, just us going in and out of our neighborhood to not feeling like it's changed and like a whole different place than where we wanted to buy our house and live, hopefully, for the rest of our life, because we love it here. So I'm appreciative of that, and I hope you guys understand that they've been working with us on that. I'm also in support of a residential idea with that minimal impact.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, is that everyone? All right, well, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, I thanked everybody.
One more. Kim Cathers, Tedwell Road. I guess that from my perspective, I worry, I worried initially, before speaking with the builders, about, you know, this additional, additional building, all, you know, more cars, more traffic, and them coming right into Tedwell, coming up Tedwell to get into the development. But then they were so kind to say, well, look, what we were thinking about doing is having the entrance be off of Ferry Road, but not on Tedwell. Because quite frankly,
on Tedwell. Because quite frankly, like, like they've said before, we don't have any sidewalks. We walk the dog. And now with the electric cars, you can't even hear them. I almost got run over the other day. So, you know, that's really, and with all the small children, we were worried about Tedwell having all of this traffic coming up and down. So hopefully, if they did put an entrance off of Ferry, that would alleviate that problem. So I just wanted to make sure that we continued with that option. But they have been great with working with us, the builders, so that was all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before I say thank you again. All right, one more?
Two, Orb Sands, two issues. One is the, the water issues in that whole development to Fountainville, so we have a lot of underground springs. And then the second thing is I didn't know how many homes or townhomes you can build on five acres. So that was my question.
I don't know what the max-
Is there a limit as, as to how many?
There is a limit. I don't know off the top of my head. Well, I think, Ed, if you want to address that in your, you're going to need to go through the zoning change process, and part of that will be to create that ordinance that he was talking about.
Yeah, I think the plan that we rendered and showed tonight, I think, has 23 townhomes on the five acres, which I think is 4.6 or something units per acre. I think something in that range. So that was the discussion with the larger group of neighbors. And as either Mike or Kevin said, we started out at mid-30s and we ended up at 23. So that's what it is.
Okay. And the price for the new homes?
I'll defer that to Kevin, and I think he guessed earlier. Could be $750,000, $800,000 per unit, something like that. Certainly will not have an adverse effect on property values in the immediate area.
Okay, thank you.
If that would be the concern.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Thank you very much. The Detwiler property?
We're done?
Oh, yes.
We're done? Okay.
Yes, I think we're finished. Thank you so much.
All right.
Next step would be to make formal application for zoning change, go to the planning commission, encourage the residents. Thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts with the board, and to attend the planning commission and share those same thoughts with them.
And we will do as well. We will, we have a relationship now with the neighbors. We keep in direct contact with them. We'll make sure everybody's fully aware.
Perfect, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Kudos to you guys for the relationship with the neighbors. Really appreciate that.
Next up is the Detwiler property. Are we staying? Okay. This property is located on Lower State Road, and they are in need of public sewer. Public sewer exists in the roadway. They're seeking the waiver to go into public sewer. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Wait, who, who made the motion?
Barbara did.
I did, or I seconded.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll make the motion.
All right, all right. Judy and then Barbara. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Let's go back to our agenda. Correspondence. We have none. No correspondence. Reports. Solicitor?
No report.
All right. Township engineer?
Nothing to add tonight.
Chief?
Couple of quick record-keeping things. The Traffic Commission met on February 23rd. The, and adopted three regulations, first of which was a multiway stop at Sandy Ridge Road and Broad Street and Settlers Drive. That's been completed. The second one was a, Walden Road was posted, no parking both sides of the roadway from Route 611 back to the cul-de-sac. And the third and final one was a multiway stop sign at the intersections of Shady Retreat Road and Burpee Road that will be completed as the bike and hike path becomes completed, I guess, later this fall. I don't really know what their timeline, but the installation of that is part of the project itself. That's all I have at this time. I will have comments when Mr. Tomko speaks on the traffic calming.
Fantastic. All right. Director of Operations?
First item is for the Community Recreation Center, the audio/video equipment vendor proposal, recommendation for award. This is, is in the budget. It's part of the soft cost, and it's a, it's a contract that we are doing directly with the vendor outside of the contractors that, contracts that are approved. Myself, Ed Ebenbach, Karen Sweeney, Rick Shea, all worked with Audio, I'm sorry, AVT, Audio Visual Technologies. They're actually the company we contracted with to do the AV in this room and for our broadcast. So we worked with the proposal, right-sized it. I have one correction in my memo. So the work for, under this contract is, is work in the lobby to provide monitors and a digital signage interface software for information for people coming to the park, Community Recreation Center. Also for wireless microphone systems and digital control panel and projection devices in the multipurpose rooms. The gymnasium is going to be just the wireless microphone audio system with the digital panel as well as device inputs and ceiling speakers. We should need to strike off the projector at this time. That was a cost prohibitive item, so we were striking that. That was an error in my memo that I did not edit. And the final item is going to be work that the Public Works Department will do on the patio to provide audiovisual TV in there. That's being done in-house. So the proposal from Audio Visual, or I'm sorry, Slide Video Technologies, it's a CoStarz contract, and the total for the Community Recreation Center is $151,378. I'd like the board's approval to move forward with AVT, please.
Sound moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
Okay. The second item is also with Community Recreation Center, Skeptin Construction Change Order Number Two, provided in my memo, as well as the attached change order, which has been approved by MKSD, is signed by Skeptin Construction, as well as Anthony Fay with MCFA now, not Quattrofoil, for our owner's representative who's reviewed this and approved it. This is for, the second change order is for $6,203.05 for basically adding wiremesh reinforcement into our concrete sidewalks around the building, because we will be running equipment on it to do winter maintenance and building maintenance, so we want that extra reinforcement. I'd ask the board's approval, please, for change order number two for Skeptin Construction.
Sound moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-oh. Next.
Okay. Third item is our street sweeping contract. This is an annual contract that we do spring and fall sweep, street sweeping. This is, was originally awarded in 2022 with the option for two one-year contract extensions. So it was originally awarded in 2022 by the Board of Supervisors, and it's been in 23. I have reached out, and Riley Sweeping LLC, doing business as SCA Sweeping of Pennsylvania, wants to extend the contract for 2024. The total cost for the street sweeping for '24 is $42,561.60. And I'm also asking the board to accept their hourly rate for additional sweepings, whether it be for emergency services that we may have for spills or what other items that may occur. That is $165.82.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, last item is, is my, the Turk Road Traffic Calming Study. My memo lists, you know, goes back to 20, December of '23, and is, is kind of running tally of the items that the traffic, the local traffic advisory committee has been doing regarding Turk, Turk Road Traffic Calming. I won't go through all the items except for what has transpired since I last reported to the board, which was back in November 21st of '23. We had come forth to the board and requested that the traffic calming policy be amended when doing the first round of surveys for doing a traffic calming study and reducing that percentage for positive survey responses from 70% to 50%. That was done in November. The board approved that. Subsequent, December 12th, 2023, local traffic advisory committee meeting was held where we received additional survey results from Ms. Roder, who lives on Turk Road, and has spearheaded this process. And we reviewed those results based on the new requirements of the first round of the survey. And no, basically, the LTAC agreed that we met the requirement. Unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum at that time, so it was just basically discussion, and it was, is basically tabled. Meeting in January 17th of 2024, the LTAC meeting again, where we did have a quorum finally. We basically did the same thing, reviewed the results of the survey, and at that time, the LTAC, a motion was made and passed that the board, we would, the LTAC and myself being the chair of the LTAC would make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to proceed with the traffic calming study of Turk Road in accordance with the proposal that was prepared by Penoni Associates dated October 11th, 2023, at an estimated cost of $15,000 to $20,000. Additionally, another piece of that was that we had a discussion about the Turk Road weight restriction. What we determined was that the, at the time, the current weight restriction was not, was not ever studied and properly documented. That's what we learned. So that basically, that was removed by Warrington on their side. And again, for everybody's knowledge, Warrington, Turk Road is, is split down the Milton Township line. It is split between Doylestown Township and Warrington Township from Bristol Road all the way to the border with King Park and Turk Park. That's, that's where the road is shared. It ends right there at the, at the property line. Truck restriction was conducted by, a study was conducted by the Doylestown Township Police Department, as well as Penoni conducted a supplemental truck study. And based on the recommendation, it came out that we couldn't weight restrict the road. However, the recommendation was to, or at least from Penoni, was to restrict the road based on length of trucks. In November, Warrington Township traffic engineer at the time reviewed Penoni's study, and they concurred with the results. However, Corporal Knight from Warrington Township Police Department also reviewed it. He also provided, very well thought out, and provided data on why he didn't agree with posting the truck restrictions. And however, and he indicated in his, his email that was provided to us by the Warrington Township manager at that time, that he would, if PennDOT approved the restriction, that he would, it would, he would have, it would have his blessing. That's, that was a quote from his email. On March 28th, 2024, I wrote in my memo that we received approval from PennDOT to install the truck restriction signs on Bristol Road at the intersection of Eastern Road and Alms House Road, and as, I'm sorry, at Bristol Road and Turk Road, as well as Eastern Road and Alms House Road. And I just said that that's not wholly accurate. I thought there was a approval. We did not receive approval from PennDOT. We had PennDOT review, reviewed, or was provided with Penoni's study that we did for the lengths, and they basically indicated to us they wanted additional signage posted on their state roads in advance of Turk Road for the restriction. So we don't have an approval. It's a, it's kind of like, hey, yes, we've seen this, but here's what we want on our roads. So it's not 100% accurate, my statement, and I apologize for that. So at this point in time, my, and we also don't know what's the position of Warrington Township at this time. We don't have their support. Okay? So at this point in time, my recommendation for, based on this memo, is, is, as the chair of the LTAC, because we had a motion that was passed, is that, that we, the board consider moving forward with the traffic study as, as outlined in Penoni's proposal and attached. That's, that's basically what my memo is about. Okay? Right now.
So can, I can, I mean, I'd like to ask a few questions, or Chief Logan, do you want to go first?
Uh, yeah. I, I would caution the board with going forward with the traffic study with tying the truck restriction to length to it. They're two totally separate things. I think you probably could incorporate them into one. The Police Department did our study, and we believe that it should, it could be restricted. The problem we have is Warrington Township is still on the fence. Without Warrington Township's cooperation and enforcement, it would be a nightmare for us to try and enforce one side of the road. So it is tied to Warrington, whether we like it or not. I think if you tie it to, if you tie that portion to the traffic study that Penoni, that Mr. Tomko is proposing that Penoni gets granted here, and have it all into one, and Warrington has to agree with that, then we could, but I would hesitate. As a member of the Traffic Commission, I would vote against putting the length restriction on there prior to a formal study regarding the entire traffic calming study. Makes sense?
Can I, yeah. I, I agree with the chief. I mean, the, the part of the, the process of the traffic calming study is to look at, and, and because these things have been raised, and the existing truck restriction, weight restriction was raised, we had everything together, and it kind of got separated. And I, and I agree, that needs to come back together, and that's part of this process.
And, and the only reason I even mention it is because Mr. Tomko's memo states in here that Warrington Township, there's two, couple things. Both recommendations are continued upon Warrington Township's approval. I agree with that 100%. But there's also a note in here as a follow-up. I request the Township Traffic Commission to take action and adopt a new, I don't want to do that right now as a member of the Traffic Commission without it being tied to this other thing. I think it would be a nightmare. It would be a nightmare for enforcement, and it would be a frustration, I believe, to the residents of Turk Road, where one side of the road or one half of the police department is enforcing the other ones are not, because we cannot be there all the time.
So just to clarify, you're saying that you want to have more discussions with Warrington about both parts of it, both the traffic study and the signage, or are you saying one of them?
I believe at this time that Warrington Township is giving us their blessing to go ahead with the traffic calming study. Put it all into one, include the restriction of the truck length into the study, and whatever other means of traffic calming you come up with, make it one big package and move forward.
Do we have the, do we have that in our budget for traffic calming? The funds for the-
I believe that there's a line item. I don't really know, to be honest with you.
We, we did have a line item for traffic calming. Yes, we did. I got to check that.
I believe it's somewhere in that realm, too.
Yeah, it was 50, so we were, we were at $50,000 a year for traffic calming features, whether it was a study or actually implementing traffic calming into-
Yeah, several years ago, there was a line item there. I don't know if it's been carried over year to year or not.
It was in there last year.
Or I don't know what current status is, to be honest with you.
So I guess my question is, do we, so you're suggesting we go ahead and spend the money for the traffic study, even though we're not really sure we're going to have Warrington on board?
You absolutely need to. I, I believe that the township needs to take action and do the traffic study. This has been going on for a, a number of years. There's enough community support to at least go forward with it. That's the whole point of what we did over the last five years to get the traffic calming program up in place. If it's not going to, if we're not going to fund it, we might as well get rid of the traffic calming plan.
So I make the motion to move forward with the traffic calming study, and maybe amends how things are connected via the chief's-
Just tie the overall traffic study, calming study, and the weight, not the weight, I'm sorry, the truck length into one, one plan, one study.
Let me kind of speak to the, the scope of the study. And again, this is, follows our traffic calming policy.
Do we have to have a second first, or no?
You should. I mean, make it easier.
Then we can have discussion, or no?
Mm-hmm. Do you want a second?
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion?
So, again, if you, you received Penoni's memo in your packet. And to, to really follow up with, with everybody in the audience as well, and just so the board knows, the first thing is going to be a kickoff meeting. There's going to be an invite to a kickoff meeting, and basically, you know, kind of just talk about traffic engineer, traffic calming, and in general, the households, the businesses that are affected by the installation of traffic calming measures will be invited. So that's part of the process. Another piece of this is the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Committee. You have to establish a Neighborhood Traffic Calming Committee of residents that attended initial meeting to help provide focus, and I'm reading from the memo, to help provide focus to the plan and the development process, development process of the traffic calming plan development process. Okay? So you have residents that are part of this committee, and in conjunction also, the LTAC will be convened to oversee the development of the traffic calming plan- traffic calming plan, which will be have, also have oversight by Panoni, our traffic engineer. So the LTAC is not going to conduct this study. Panoni is going to conduct the study. The LTAC will be part of it. The Neighborhood Traffic Calming Committee will be part of that. I don't know how many members of the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Committee we need, something we need, you know, to figure out, but that should be jointly between Warrington's side and the Doylestown side. So, and then there's a plan, I'm just going to hit the bullet points and plan development. There's going to be data collection, there's going to be appropriate traffic communes will be measured, and there's going to be concurrents and measurement and location and design. And then part B of this is approval process, another meeting, open house meeting to discuss the results, to finalize the plans, take a neighborhood vote, and then basically to have this board or, and jointly, I guess, Warrington's board, local government approval. That's the process. So I know it's, it's high level, but just want everybody to understand that process, not just like we're going to do a study. I agree. Everything we've looked at and is good, we have a lot of data that's been collected. We don't have to waste time. We have a ton of data from our side, from Warrington's side. We look at the truck restriction, we can include PennDOT, at least again, having this information and put this all together and move forward.
I just want to verify where we're at with Warrington specifically. I, I have no concerns about spending the money on the traffic study. But I am concerned that they're kind of seeming to fight us a little bit or not replying to us, that I don't want us to have proposals and then have to fight them to get something implemented. Do we know where we stand with them or the, are we having discussions with them or are they just kind of ignoring us until we come to them with something?
Dave and I had a conversation with Lee Greenberg, who is their interim manager. You know, he indicated that if we wanted to go through forward with the study, we should definitely move forward with that. He is unsure where their board is at this point with whether they want to, how, at what level they would want to participate. He's very new to the position. They have, I believe, a new traffic engineer and, you know, several new members on their board. So obviously, they did have a, I saw they had a traffic, sort of an ad hoc traffic committee in Warrington, and it was identified in some of their minutes and, I guess, in '23. Not sure if that group still exists. Mr. Greenberg wasn't sure who that might be. I don't think it, and I don't mean to overstep or anything, but I'm wondering if it may help if we have a letter from the board, perhaps the board chair, sent to the Warrington Township Board Chair, kind of laying out what action this board takes this evening, what the next steps would be, and asking them to participate in that process.
That's a good suggestion.
I mean, we're willing, obviously, like Dan says, we're willing to pay for it, so.
So we need to amend that to also include a letter from the chair to the Warrington Chair with the information about how the board plans to proceed and look for their support.
Excuse me, point of order, I think that needs to be two different motions, first approval, the, you know, the.
All right.
Yeah, first, make the first motion and then the second one, that the chairman be the author a letter to the chairman of the Warrington Township Board.
I'd like to just ask about the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Committee. How many people does that need to be? And Heather's here, I know, what kind of commitment, is that a requirement of the study from Panoni to have that committee? And what kind of commitment would the neighbors have to, is that in order to be a part of that study? What kind of commitment is needed to be a part of that study?
It's part of our policy, that's part of the traffic calming policy, which has been gleaned out of PennDOT's policy, traffic calming policy.
Okay.
And I don't know verbatim, honestly, I don't know if it's, can be, you know, I'm not, I don't want to throw out a number because I don't know, I don't know that our policy speaks to it, has to be, it just says basically, you need to have, you know, residents attend the initial meeting to help develop and focus the plan development process.
So it can be kind of ad hoc, it doesn't have to be super formal?
It can, yes, and so, and look, we're not talking a lot of hours here, obviously, we have scheduled meetings, we'll have routes, we want to move this forward.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I understand, thank you. I have a motion and a second on the traffic study. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I need a motion on communication to the Warrington Board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So.
Thank you.
Moving on.
By all means, go to their meeting and nag them to.
We see the Pecan Gallery.
I think you're at me.
Township manager.
Hi, I'm going to try to make this quick, it's, the hour is late. The Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board and Chairman Van Houten is here this evening. Talked about a grant opportunity that was forwarded to us and we reviewed it at their last meeting. And they are proposing that we consider applying for a DCD grant that would allow us to do a baseline water quality data program. And part of that requirement, and I did include the DCD requirements, is that we have to have a geologist write the scope of the grant, as well as help us, you know, with the grant itself. I have two proposals before the board this evening, one from Gilmore for 8,280 and one from Penn E and R for 9,200.
I move that we approve the Gilmore and Associates contract for 8,280 to do the geological evaluation for the DCE grant.
Do you have a second?
Have a question to participate in the baseline water quality data program.
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh?
I wish everything was that easy.
All right, thank you so much for staying.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Excellent job. So we're going to move on to supervisor comments, and of course, it's late, so if we can, this is safe, that would be lovely. First up, Nancy, why don't you go first?
Sure, just want to say congratulations to Janet Casey, thank you for your 15 years. Appreciate all the presentations tonight and a special thanks to our staff for an excellent presentation on the budget. That's it, thank you.
G. I want to thank Chief Logan, Lieutenant Ziegler, Sergeant Whiteside, and especially Officer Danny Carr. It was Take Your Supervisor to Work Day. I got to ride with Danny Carr today for half, for the morning, and I very much enjoyed it, he's professional, he keeps the, the traffic in control and we keep, you all keep us safe. So I'm very much appreciated getting that arranged, thank you very much.
Barbara?
Yes, on behalf of the community, what do I do? Committee, I have to ask the board to all contribute to the capital campaign, we cannot represent that we have, that we're all on board unless I have everybody on board, whether it be $50 or $500, I need everyone on the board to contribute to the capital campaign. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, Dan?
Yeah, so I do want to thank all the residents that came out tonight to make their concerns heard, and I also want to thank Zaveta for what is really unusual for a developer at this stage to come and answer public comment for this long. This is usually something done more in the planning stages and the zoning hearing stages. So, and this isn't me putting my finger on the scale in any way, but I do just want to acknowledge that Zaveta taking the time to do that and the Bucks County Historical Society should be appreciated. And, and again, thank you to the residents for communicating with them. Also, on that note, I just want to point out that we have our planning meeting coming up on the 22nd this month. I don't know if we have anything on the agenda just yet, but if we.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, I apologize, but the Planning Commission is on April 29th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had it on my calendar on a different date.
Apologize.
29th then, no, no, that's a good correction. And we meet every fourth Monday, unusually.
There's a holiday on the fourth Monday this year.
Gotcha, that's why. All right, and I also want to thank Joe Van Houten and the rest of the Water and Sewer Advisory Board, because I've been the liaison for a long time, we've been talking about doing these kinds of studies for PPOS for quite some time, so it's nice to see a solution coming together for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, and I'll be brief as well. So since the last meeting, I was able to have a meeting with the, with an ambulance company that services our municipality as well as a Doyle, Doylestown Fire Department. And the reason why I bring this up is because we've had two, two presentations today that talks about these beautiful buildings that they're looking to potentially develop. And to me, I think that they, it's wonderful to have a township that has these gorgeous buildings, but both the ambulance company and the Doylestown Fire Department made it a point to say that they had difficulty filling their employment volunteers because of the cost of housing in the region. And this is not just Doylestown, this is all the region. So it would be wonderful if the Planning Commission would take a look at that and see what we can do about having workforce housing in the township. But that's the first thing that came to mind when I was thinking about all these wonderful developments that are coming up potentially. And I just want to say I wish everybody celebrates Passover and heed a joyous and peaceful holiday, and that's the end of my comments. So next, we have zoning hearing board, and thank you for everybody keeping up with the agenda going back and forth.
The Morris property at 312 Bunker Hollow is seeking request on pervious surface variance. I would leave that matter to the zoning hearing board to address.
Okay.
And the Beckett's property on South Shady Retreat is also requesting pervious surface coverage and setbacks due to the very small size of their building lot. It is an existing undersized lot. So again, allow them to go to the zoning hearing board.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the treasurer's report?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, Barbara, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bills List, do you have a motion?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other public comment for the evening? Okay, Joe?
Thank you. So I do have one comment with regards to the proposed bag ordinance. And I'm all for the fact of the, you know, out, doing away with single-use plastic bags. However, I do have a vast concern with regard to the board of supervisors having the ability to basically tell private retailers and businesses what they should charge for an item or service. So in this case here, basically, part of the ordinance is stating to charge 15 cents for a recycled paper bag. It's not a tax, it doesn't come back to the township, you're saying 15 cents, you must, you should, you know, you must charge us, not that you have the option, you must charge us 15 cents, and you keep it. My concern is, what type of precedent does that set? So theoretically, let's say the board at some point, either this board or a future board, says, you know what, electric cars are really great for the environment. And in doing so, what we want to do is, we're going to say, any gas station within Doylestown Township, you must charge a dollar extra a gallon. Now, it's not a tax and it's not going to be redeemed to the township, you keep that as a way of trying to dissuade people from using gas-powered vehicles. Or what if you do the same thing with home heating oil? You know, at some point, I don't know, within the township charter, where the supervisors have the authority to set a price for a retail product at a private establishment? And I think that would be a question for the solicitor.
Well, I, I understand your point. The two examples you gave about home heating oil and gasoline are two heavily regulated areas that the township would be preempted from, from doing anything, because the state or the federal government takes that over, although I understand it, the point that you're making. We believe that the ordinance requiring a business to charge a certain amount for paper bags as part of this ordinance is, is legal, it's within our authority to do so. We don't believe that it goes beyond what we're allowed to do under the second-class Township Code, and it's a matter of discretion and policy for the board.
But should we do it then? That's the question. It, it, it doesn't seem like we should be doing something like that. It seems a little overreaching and heavy-handed.
I would agree, I would agree with you, Barbara, 100%.
I think the rest of the ordinance is commendable. I just think it's an overreach on the township, I think, and again, a lot of the government policies start off with a very good, you know, very good meaning behind it, but then certain things like this get added to it and it really could set a precedent. And maybe I didn't use the right ones, but there could be plenty of other examples down the road that, that people would question and maybe come back and use this as a precedent for. So just keep that in mind, please.
I believe the borough started with the charge and then ended up pulling that back after they posted it, is that what happened?
That is the case, I believe.
Right, I believe that's what they did.
But there are other municipalities that did implement a charge on paper bags, so there's a mixed, mixed.
Has it been, has it been posted? Do we, our 180 days begin when we vote?
No, you haven't adopted it, you haven't adopted it yet. The hearing will be March 20, or May 20, I apologize, will be May 21st, correct, Mike?
I believe that's the date that we're, it's advertised for.
And I don't think it has been advertised yet, or no?
I'm, I'm not sure if it's been advertised yet, I think it, I don't think it has those.
I haven't seen it, that's why I was wondering.
There'll be further discussion on it before we vote on this.
And I just have a question and clarification for the board. If at the hearing they want, wanted to maybe make that optional for a business to charge, would it have to be re-advertised at that point?
So there is an argument that taking out that section would be a substantial amendment that would require re-advertising. I would say that if you were to reduce it, that would not be a substantial amendment, but if you were to take it out entirely, it might qualify as a substantial amendment to the ordinance, which would require re-advertising.
Maybe we take it out now.
Unfortunately, we can't, because what you voted to approve to send last month included it, yeah.
Never mind, you're right.
Could we just postpone it and, and take the time to do it right since, since it's up for conversation at our next meeting?
Well, it's happened, the ordinance, the hearing will be held and the ordinance will be voted down if that, it remains.
It doesn't really change the timeline to do.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't take any action on it this evening.
Right, understood.
It's not listed on the agenda, so.
Okay. Right. All right, I guess that's all of our business, and I will call this meeting adjourned.